City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Uh, Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Revelle.
Here.
Alderman Rainey. Here.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, November 7th, 2016, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements. I have one. Studio Tallo, an Evanston-based architectural firm, received an American Institute of Architects Innovation Award for Technology in Architectural Practice for their design of the Y O U headquarters. The project was one of five worldwide to win this prestigious award. A I A commended Studio Tallo for its deep involvement of youth in the design process. Uh, City Manager, do you have announcements?
I do not.
Thank you. And City Clerk, do you have communications? And how many people have voted so far?
Uh, no, I do not have any communications, but, um, they're breaking records, uh, this year. Um, I don't know the exact number, but we're close to something like, uh, what did I say before?
Almost fifteen thousand.
About fifteen thousand so far it's been through. We've been doing averaging about a thousand a day, uh, and tonight probably break that, uh, probably get two thousand tonight. Who knows?
It's wonderful.
But we include today's.
Oh, yes. And remember that all the votes that are coming in tonight are not just Evanston, but they also were met, uh, Kenilworth, all of the suburban Cook County residents as well.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is public comment. Has anyone signed up, or is there anything for anyone to sign on out there? What? Who? Oh. Oh. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna call the first four speakers. You each have three minutes. Carlos Sutton, Janad Rizki, Jerry Garl, and Janet Alexander-Davis.
Good evening, Mayor Tisdale, City Manager, and City Clerk, and members of the City Council. I'm Carlos Sutton, and I'm here this evening to express my concerns about the prioritization and distribution of the settlement with the waste transfer station. I am requesting that you review the survey distributed by many concerned citizens of the Second and Fifth Ward and implement our concerns in your deliberations. There are many issues with infrastructure that are pressing in our city. However, citizens and stakeholders, and those citizens living in close proximity to the waste transfer station, should be given priority. Continued dialogue with the owners of the waste transfer station is necessary. Continued monitoring by both the Illinois and Natural Environmental Protection Agency are necessary for our quality of life and property values. Our children deserve better and an environment that is healthy for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Several meetings ago, some on this council were claiming I'm the only citizen complaining about the mismanagement at the Water Department, and everything was wonderful. Someone associated with the James Park neighbor handed me this flyer, basically stating water pipes in southwest Evanston are contaminated. To me, what has been going on at James Park is a reflection of the mess the City of Evanston government has become. Over $2 million wasted on what I would consider really a ridiculous and bogus lawsuit, raising many questions of the operation of the legal department and the City Council itself. There is a common thread here. Mr. Bobkowitz believes he is, can continue to act, can act continually without council approval, spending our money, unless he is informing you in private, which I'm not clear this is, this would be occurring because it would violate the Open Meetings Act. The mess on Howard Street recently came up with this architectural work being done with a change order without giving approval. The memo that came to the council was extremely misleading. You didn't really know if the work was done or not, but it was admitted that the work had been done prior to council approval. And I do believe the council understood this with the five to four vote that did occur. It was telling me, it is telling me that some of you are starting to realize we have a problem here. I really have no confidence in the city budget documents with all this kind of mischief going on. We were told recently that we were going to sell the recycling center. Now it's coming back as a lease. This council hasn't discussed that or talked about it. Did this council give, Mr. Bobkowitz, the authority to negotiate a lease? Clearly, the city may not have any real financial benefit here. And this is a common thread here. Frankly, the real issue we have, this council continues to accept unacceptable, unprofessional work by staff, which is really becoming a reflection of the council members who sit up here and continue to pass this as consent agenda. We don't need a water bill increase, because I believe this is just grabbing our money. There's no real capital work that's being done here in addition to what hasn't been done in prior years. I just believe this is a grab of money. But council members will not really ask for a real, real reflection or look at this carefully, other than pass it on possibly. There is another very troubling trend here. What I consider useless programs and jobs being created that could be viewed as political patronage or nonsense. Equity coordinator position, please. Can't we figure out how to give out resources in this town without hiring somebody to do that? It makes no sense. It's a waste of money, probably eighty to a hundred thousand dollars thrown away. And there's a huge job program. Are we gonna have more kids working here than employees for a couple months? Is that going to really wait, do anything to solve anything? And frankly, anybody who's looked at the numbers realizes the rate of deaths here in this town, black males, is just beating the national average, which hasn't, they haven't solved anything. Nothing's being solved here. And of course, when you appoint the police chief to run the fire department, that really has, says it all about the management here. Frankly, it's time council members take control or be voted out of office. We did not hire Wally to set direction here. He is supposed to act at your direction with our interests reflecting the citizens' wishes. And if we can't change it, it's time we change staff and public officials here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jerry Garl. I live at sixteen oh seven Dobson Street. And good evening, Mayor Tisdale, the City Manager, City Council, and City Staff. I'm speaking tonight as a member of the Environment Board's Environmental Justice Subcommittee. And while I don't live in the Second or the Fifth Ward's, I know that decisions made by the city to support the residents affected by the improperly cited waste transfer station represent the values and sense of fairness of all residents of Evanston. I'd call the council's attention to the specific recommendations made by the E J subcommittees based on the four hundred and seventy-two survey respondents submitted by Evanston residents. It's a credit to the city that such a survey was conducted, to hear directly from the affected residents about their concerns, and how the waste transfer station budget reserve might be used to address them. According to the survey, the vast majority of respondents want a baseline assessment of both environmental impacts and infrastructure impacts conducted and made public. Community members said they want to know about the environmental and health impacts in the neighborhood, such as rodent infestations, noise levels, odors, air quality, and soil contamination, as well as their own related health issues of nearby residents. The respondents supported expending forty-two percent of the available funds to know more about these impacts. However, answering these questions is not a simple matter of hiring a firm to take and analyze some air, soil, and water samples. As the survey recommendations spell out, an initial investment of about a hundred thousand dollars of the one point two million could be used to conduct a preliminary background investigation for screening purposes that would lead to a more refined, targeted monitoring program for the long term. Ultimately, whatever monitoring is collected should be done in a way that identifies the cause of the problem and leads directly to more effective oversight and improved conditions and operating practices at the facility. There are still unanswered questions about the oversight of the facility at the state and the county level. The initial investigation should collect all available site information, permit conditions, and clearly describe the roles of the various agencies and jurisdictions, including the city, and what authorities they have to influence the operating, operations at the facility. This would include specific monitoring and operating practices required by the Illinois EPA permit, and any, excuse me, oversight conducted by the city, or county, or others. If we do this in a strategic way, Evanston's investment may be used to leverage additional support from the state and county, and from the facility itself, in addressing these concerns. So my recommendation is for the city to commission an R F P scoping team led by the city, and involving affected residents, environmental and public health professionals from Northwestern and other local, state, and federal institutions, that would be tasked to develop an R F P to contract out this initial scoping investigation. I brought a couple of guidance documents that are available from U S E P A on the subject of waste transfer stations and community involvement that might have some relevant, excuse me, information to offer, and I'd like to bring this up and share them with the City Manager, if that's okay.
Go right ahead. Thanks a lot. Thank you. Janet.
Hi, everybody. See if I can figure this out. Good evening, citizens of Evanston, Alderman Tisdale, City Clerk Green, and City Manager, Wally, because I cannot deal with that last name. My name is Janet Alexander-Davis, a member of the E J Subcommittee of the city's Environmental Board. I've come to speak with you about the allocation of the one point two million paid to the city earlier this year. The E J committee has worked to inform ourselves about a garbage dump located in a residential environment. Yes, I know, the business was there before some residents, but way more have lived in the Second and the Fifth Ward for generations. I'm seventy-three years old, and except for eight of those years, I've lived with the odor, the large trucks, the backup of traffic, and more. Now that the business is a transfer station, we don't know where this waste is coming from, and what the perfume smell that covers the odor is made of. My concern is, without monitoring of the sites, water, soil, air, and more, is there a health risk for our people, the city's people, that has not been looked after in a very professional way? I ask all nine of you to think how you'd feel about a business such as this residing near your lovely home. Many of us don't realize, many of us didn't realize that we could fight for, to change some of these things, and make suggestions. Please give these neighbors a chance to know, and forever know, if there are health risks looming near their lovely home. I appreciate the support of Evanston Environmental Board, and Citizens for a Greener Evanston, with the reprimandations our committee have submitted to Alderman Peter Braithwaite and Alderman Dolores Holmes. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Dorothy, whose last name I can't read, and DeKalb. My apologies, Dorothy.
That's fine. No problem. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm here, I'm, I'm part of the Evanston Environmental, I'm sorry, Evanston Social, what am I a part of? Anyway, E J committee. I've been working with, I've been on two or three of the different committees for, since two thousand and eleven, and I've been working with this organization, these organizations for quite some time. I just want to ratify what Carlos, and Jerry, and Janet had to say about the waste transfer station. You were so kind to submit surveys to the residents, giving them the impression that they had a say in how the money that was received was going to be spent. Now that you've done that, I think it is incompetent upon you to make sure that you spend this money the way that they have suggested it to be spent. They, I think, otherwise, people leave, lose confidence in you. They don't know, you know, and you certainly don't want that. So I think we need to spend this money the way they have suggested that it be spent, and not take it and do what we want to do with it, because that would make them lose confidence. And you, and who knows? You may need these residents for something else in the future. So, that's my take on it, and I just hope you'll do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Tisdale, City Manager, Clerk Green, and Alderman, older people of the council. DeKalb Fonda, I've been a longtime resident of the Second Ward. And in two thousand and eight, we engaged in a collaborative project with the City of Evanston. Several neighborhood associations came together, and we spent two hundred thousand dollars that you raised from the, the developers of the Evanston Plaza. I forget what, we called it the mitigation fund. And we spent a very democratic process with many neighborhood groups, trying to decide what to do with that money. It was designated for beautification, for mitigating any, any, uh, negative impacts by the plaza on our neighborhoods. So we spent a good year on that process, and we came up with several ideas, one of which was a huge, cutting-edge landscaping project that ended up in the planting of beautiful, uh, annual flowers and plants on fifty-two neighborhood corners throughout the, both the Fourth and Second Ward, from Greenwood to Lee, and from Hartree to Florence, as well as five cul-de-sacs. And I think you have a packet with a lot of pictures of what these corners looked like in their heyday, from, by the two thousand and nine, when they finally took, took hold, until today. And you also have pictures of what they look like today. This was a project that resulted in beautifying the neighborhood. We felt that it also really, because it was such beauty to walk through, and we are, we are a, a route from high school to home, that many of the teenagers, who many people said, oh, they'll just trash these corners, they'll throw their McDonald's bags in the corners, they never did. And I think when people walk through beauty, they feel peaceful, and they feel respected, and they act respectfully, and they did, for the last eight years. Now, as you look at your, in fact, I remember Alderman Rainey, I appreciated that you said when we spoke about this project, that it was one of the most creative projects that you had seen come to council. And it was, and it really has created a difference in our neighborhoods. But we're now in a position where the money ran out. For two years, Nature's Perspectives, who we contracted with, did gratis work. They did this for free. They maintained them. But by last year, the hope was that neighbors would pick it up, and we tried really hard to get neighbors to do that, and some of us have. We're not landscapers, not, none of us, some of us are gardeners, and I am, but we haven't done a great job of being able to maintain these corners, and they're really not looking good at all. And it's a blight. Instead of a beauty, it's a blight. So you have a request that, that we, we came to Alderman Braithwaite and, and began to work on, how can we, how can we maintain these corners going into the future and for future generations? So there's a request in front of you now, with, with several, you know, dollar figures attached, that you would consider, and I ask that you consider seriously, maintaining and, and budgeting money to maintain this beauty in this part of our city that is undergoing a renaissance in economic development, so that we can continue this into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment. City Manager, do we have a special order of business?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Single item for further discussion regarding the twenty seventeen budget. At the end of last week, we provided an update to the budget memorandum that was requested, and that's dated November the fourth. We're happy to speak to the, the items that are included here. I do want to bring to the council's attention one additional item that has not been discussed at the council, but is an issue of concern for me, which I'd like to share with you. As you know, the City Council allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for improvements at the Harley Clark Mansion. The city continues to work to identify the best way to spend those dollars. Unfortunately, we have not concluded a plan that I think makes sense in order for us to move forward. We're gonna continue to do that work. I have discussed this with Alderman Revelle, who's, the building is in her ward, and Alderman Wilson, who was the sponsor of the solution that was adopted by the council, and we continue to talk about that with the goal of making improvements within the budget that was allocated. So I want to bring this to the council's attention. It's my intention to put this on the agenda for the twenty-eighth, prior to adoption of the budget. I am confident that we will, we will find a way to do this within the allocated dollars, but I wanted to raise this with you, in the off-chance that we're not, and we need to make adjustments to the, the budget before it's adopted at the end of the month. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, with that, again, we have the questions that have been answered, and would open, welcome any additional discussion. Our hope is this evening that if the council is able to conclude deliberations on the budget, we would not have discussion, as previously agreed, at your meeting on November the fourteenth, that we would then not have the need for a meeting Thanksgiving week on Monday the twenty-first, and then come back to you on November twenty-eighth for the adoption of the budget.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
It's, it's my general impression, one of the speakers, Ms. Fonda, talked about the maintenance. It's my impression that those costs are covered in the budget. Is that a fair characterization?
Alderman Wilson, members of the council, as they, as the budget currently stands, they're not, you were kind enough to share the emails that were, were going around. We've, I think, have a solution. Mr. Lyons, if the council's concurrence, if you'd like to come up and, and describe, I, I think what, what we're proposing to do is to take this from a, a portion of the budget that was created with the dissolution of Evanston Township. Mr. Lyons, why don't you take it from there?
I guess, I'll correct my comment. I shouldn't have said covered in the budget, but it wouldn't result in a budget increase.
We believe we can, I'll let Mr. Lyons address it.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Madam Mayor, Clerk Green, members of council. As noted by our speaker tonight, this has been an ongoing program that's always suffered from the maintenance side of things, and I'll echo their thanks for Nature's Perspective in picking this up and helping us out tremendously over the last several years. What we're talking about is looking at, when the township was disbanded, we had general assistance funds, we had assessment funds, and then we had some miscellaneous programs that we have had in the city's general fund. Right now, those, and more recently, we took those programs and moved them to what is our Human Services Fund. Long story to get to, we would propose taking funds from the general fund, which does a transfer every year to the Human Services Fund for mental health board and other miscellaneous services, and have that be the receptacle for the funding to have this community improvement project be spent out of. So, I'm sorry, I have a round number, but what is the, the specific number that is?
We've been discussing ten thousand dollars an annual.
And I, and I wasn't sure if that was in a different email that I hadn't seen yet.
Yeah, so the ten, I don't have the information from you. Ten thousand dollars is what Nature's Perspective projected to bring everything up to the proper level, and then that number would take it down.
And that's where we would propose, that we can do that by transferring the fund from the general fund, along with what's already scheduled, to the Human Services Fund, and then this maintenance will be done out of there, because it's not a capital expense. It's a maintenance expense, and so we don't want to do it out of the Capital Projects Fund. It will be done with general revenues.
Okay. And if I may, I, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we already contract, or have in the past contracted, for other landscaping in other parts of the city with various funding sources. The Howard Street landscaping, we actually canceled the contract this year for, for performance issues. So that is something that is, has been contracted in the past. Also, there's been some landscaping along Green Bay Road, and I'm not sure what issues the new project. I think it has probably added some areas and subtracted some areas. So we already go through a procurement process in order to make sure all that gets covered. So from a process perspective, I think we're, we're okay. I think, as Mr. Lyons has described, I think the funding source is appropriate. Our hesitance to use economic development funds is that this is something that is, is separate from the center at this point, and while still an important thing to be done with the council's concurrence, we feel this is a better funding strategy.
Mr. Lyons, is part of the money that you're discussing using the township's burial funds?
No, we would not be taking away from any sources currently budgeted. This would be in addition to.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so just to kind of go through what is in this, this pot, there is, has been funds for burials, there have been funds for flags for veterans, for, for cemeteries on Memorial Day. We've also used funds from this account to support the West Evanston Farmers Market. So it has been a, a collection of, of community needs, and quite honestly, my sense is, over time, there'll be additional requests that the City Council will think is appropriate, and by putting it in this account, I think it's a good way for us to track it, because these are kind of miscellaneous things. We don't want to lose any of them. They're all important, and I think, I'm looking at Alderman Holmes, since many of those issues that transferred from the township, you were very concerned that we not lose track of. And I think over the last few years, this mechanism has worked to not lose track. So it's not so much the money, the value of the dollars, as it is just to make sure it has a, a good administrative home, so that it actually gets done year after year.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, I wasn't going to speak, say what I'm about to say right now, but the, the landscaping issue on Howard Street resulted from the streetscape that we did with the city of Chicago. So this isn't anything new, special, that, that Howard Street is getting. We partnered with the city of Chicago over ten years ago to do that, so it's not something special that Howard Street is getting. It was all part of the business district formation.
And absolutely, Alderman Rainey. The only reason I call that out is that we have contracted in previous years for a collection of areas together. As you know, that contract service for Howard Street this year has not been successful, and so we're gonna have to reevaluate that. But my, my guess is we would reevaluate how this is provided, including this new area, Howard Street, the area.
What we're talking about here is not a commercial strip, it's neighborhood. And we have, we, we do have other neighborhood, I mean, what about this Greenways group we have within our, I don't know if it's Parks and Recreation, or what is the Greenways service that we have within the city?
That, again, is, is maintaining public right-of-ways, really just for strict, simple maintenance. It is, it is mowing the lawn, it is trimming hedges, hopefully on an annual basis.
Well, I know, I know at the corner of Howard and, and Custer, and, and Chicago Avenue, there is a city parking lot. And that city parking lot is maintained, there are roses there and other flowers, and that is maintained by the city, I believe.
And Alderman Rainey, members of the council, I think what we would like to do is, this is a, a number of locations, and I think this is something above and beyond what we're currently doing. I will leave this in the hands of Mr. Stonebeck and Mr. DiAgostino. If they have a better idea, so be it. But again, their response in the past, when we've added very particular areas, is to include them all together and then go out to a contract.
Also, I just wanted to say to DeKalb, that you think we have information on this? We have nothing. I have nothing on this. Although I, I remember in the past, it was fabulous, but I have, I have absolutely no information, I have no idea what she started talking about tonight, so I must have missed it.
I circulated the information last, last Saturday by disk, so if I didn't get you a copy, my apologies.
And I asked Alderman Revelle if she had it.
That was the disk that I.
Peter, could you put me on the list?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, if I may, the Greenways Group does take care of the traffic circles, so this was a, a project that the traffic circles. So this was a project that the traffic circles were a part of it, and so were the corners. They went in similar times, and our staff has taken care of the circles. They're right in the middle of the roadway, clearly our duty, and the residents originally were going to maintain after it was installed. And it is a difficult proposition, all 52 sites. So our recommendation is, as Mr. City Manager Bob Quitz pointed out, is for Paul DiAgostino's crew, and if we use a contractor to work together, and that's what's happened for the last four to five years in maintaining what we have been able to maintain. So this is really just, I think, an overhaul of those 52 corners, not just a maintenance and raking, and that, we need to do some substantial work to get them back in shape. So as the city manager pointed out, the Public Works Agency staff will work with a contractor if that's the best option.
I think, you know, this is another one of those cases where this is a perfect opportunity for us to use an Evanston contractor. I know, I know Nature's Perspective is great, they're big, they don't need this job, I know, I know they've always helped us out, but there are so many contractors in this town who could do this job. I hope we give some opportunity to an Evanston contractor, even if it is Nature's Perspective.
Yeah.
Just, let's think about an Evanston contractor.
And Alderman Rainey, members of the council, something we're going to, we're going to talk about hopefully at the meeting in December, but I'll preview it tonight, is that we have been working to try to, try to create additional capacity in this area because a lot of this is maintenance that perhaps is not to the, to the skill level that some of our landscape architectural firms, you know, would normally do. And so we're working for snow removal with a group in Chicago that would hire young Evanston residents to clear areas, to help our existing city staff with some of the contract parking lots, with some of the safer out-to-schools area. And we're hopeful if this is successful this year, a small pilot way, that we could have this group employ Evanston residents 12 months of the year, not only to assist us, again, with some of these more straightforward, clearing snow, raking leaves out of medians, but to have that be a 12-month-a-year addition to the work and have that be regular jobs, not necessarily summer youth employment jobs, but regular jobs for Evanston residents. And our plan was to come back with the, with the winter update. I'm not sure if we were doing that at the last meeting in November, the first meeting in December at this point, and we'll talk more about it at that point. So I think that, exactly to your point.
Seeing no lights for further discussion of that issue. The rest of the budget is up for discussion. Alderman Revelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like us to talk about the proposed increase in revenue from the meter-hour standardization program, excuse me. The budget projects that we would raise $290,000 from this meter standardization. But reading through the responses from the neighborhood businesses about this proposal, they were overwhelmingly against the idea of extending the hours of parking meters in those neighborhoods. So I would like to propose that we delete that item from our proposed revenue stream.
Alderman Win.
Yes, I also agree with Alderman Revelle on this. Many, there was a survey done on the businesses in the main Dempster Mile area, and there were many, many businesses that wrote back and said that they did not want to have the meters expanded, that, and I think that what we need to do is direct staff to go out and do more research on this, discuss this with our local businesses, and have a better understanding of what their needs are before we move forward with this. So I agree with Alderman Revelle that we need, that this is not something that we should include in the budget and that we should delete it because we actually have strong business opposition to this.
Thank you, Alderman Homes.
Just a question on what you're talking about now in terms of the parking. What about increasing the parking lot fees?
Well, actually, Alderman Revelle and I discussed that. In order to make up this revenue that was been, that's projected by increasing, unifying the, making the meters uniform, we could increase the parking lot permit, monthly permit.
Yes.
By more than the $5 that's projected in the budget. As indicated in one of these memos, one of our budget memos, the last time we raised that was 2008, which is practically, which is eight, nine years ago. Yeah. And, and really what we're, if you, the budget memo indicates, when you compare us, our rates to similar communities and also other parking lots just here in Evanston, we are a bargain. And, and I am certain that those lots, those rates have gone up over the last eight years. So I think that Alderman Homes, I think a part of the way to make up for this revenue over the parking meters would be to increase the parking lot a monthly fee, perhaps an additional $5, so it becomes.
I would agree to that.
$95.
How much money?
It's still significantly less, if you look, significantly less than any of the other lots.
I think Oak Park was like $132 or something.
$132 a month.
Yes.
I agree with adding money to the fees for the parking lots, but how much does that come out to?
Do we cover the budget, Alderman Revelle? Not quite. Or I could let.
Marty.
The real expert.
Alderman Revelle, go right ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we don't quite cover the budget, but as was noted in the memo, it's just under $160,000 per $5. So we would go up to $320,000 as an increase in revenue that would go into the general fund as an allocation, and then we would take away the parking meter revenue, which was a little bit less than that. But we had, also had this money, if you look at our budget balancing worksheet as originally delivered, we had a slightly higher amount in what was projected to come into the general fund. Short of it is, staff has already started working on how we will balance the budget in the area between $0 and $100,000 for a surplus for a presentation on November 28th. So if we just do as what has been proposed, we think that we will be able to come in at balance as we did in the original proposed budget in the general.
Without raising additional revenue or cutting expenditure. So we've, we've not gone through a final review of revenue estimates, which was last done when the budget was completed in September, so we'd like to do that, and we think the order of magnitude is doable, given our past experience.
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit confused. Are you saying?
You don't need it?
We don't need the additional $5?
No, we do need the additional $5.
So essentially, the parking lot fee goes from 85 to 95?
And that, along with a review of current revenues, and we will stay in balance with all of the parking meter revenues, as shown, going to zero.
Okay. You know, I misspoke. It's going from 80 to 85, isn't it?
No.
Eighty-five to 95.
Eighty-five to 90, and then.
I just wanted to make sure.
Presentation would be, the recommendation is 85 to 95.
Okay.
Alderman Rainey.
How do you figure in the county tax?
I'm going to work with the true parking wizard, Mr. Voss, and we are going to sit down and make sure that we manage through the parking tax because that is something that we back into the total rate by making sure we don't run afoul of the county tax and end up paying more taxes than we need to. So I don't have that completely figured.
While we, while we raise it to 95, we, we're not going to be generating the dollars we think we're raising because we have to increase the county tax.
And the last time we went from 80 to 85, we were successful in navigating that so as to not have to pay a higher tax amount. And I will come back with a budget memorandum on the calculation.
I would like to know what that is, yeah, and how, how it would differ if we went to 100.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. But looking at, even looking at the other parking lots in our community, E2 and 1717 Bridge and Central Station, I mean, they're so much, almost double of what we're charging. So it just makes, yeah, I mean, it's ridiculous. And so it just makes sense to increase it.
And this, would this include an increase in the surface lots that we have?
Presently, it does not. If you'd like, we could come back with that as.
There is no equity in the amount we charge in the surface lots, I found out, that they're all different. Because evidently, in the past, there were vacancies in many of the lots, and now my understanding is all of the lots have waiting lists.
Most of our lots are full.
They probably should be all equal, I would think.
Theoretically, it is to be a, both a distance from the utilization, so if it's a distance from the commuter station, then the farther the distance, the less the lot. And then, community by community, the farther out you go, the less you charge for parking because the more they must pay for a metro pass. So that's fairly standard mathematics, that the commuter pays X in total. So as we get in closer, obviously, somebody who drives all the way to the loop pays $80 a day, not $80 a month. So, but we will come back with the surface lot analysis as well.
There's another analysis also, and that is where there is extreme congestion, residential congestion, and no parking. Those lots become even more valuable.
They do.
Regardless of where the station is.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Just, I guess echoing what Alderman Rainey and Alderman Homes said, I think, looking at these other rates, even the $100 range seems to me to be a pretty good bargain compared to E2, 1717, Central Station. These other lots are far, far greater than what we're charging, so interested to see those numbers. But I also support the parking meter issue as well, as laid out by Alderman Win.
Alderman. Thank you, Alderman Homes.
I have two things. The equity and empowerment coordinator position, the revision, I just really want to commend the staff on job absolutely well done. I am absolutely thrilled with the revision. I'm particularly impressed with the phasing in because this is a lot to ask someone to do, and the two phases is just absolutely wonderful. And I, again, I think we need to be clear that this is just not making sure that jobs are being handed out. This is about equity in terms of gender, race, age, everything. I mean, this is really going to make a big, big piece for Evanston, I think, in terms of showing what kind of community we really are. So it's not money wasted at all. I know that there will be others who will disagree with that, but I see this as being super important, and thank you so much for putting the teeth that I asked for in here. It's absolutely great. So I just wanted to say that on that one. And then I wanted to go to page 68, if you have your, page 68, in terms of dealing with the waste transfer station. I had asked for the reported requirements, and attorney for, we got the memo dated November 3rd on that, which really is nothing. So I'm going to make another request. Before I make my request, I want to say again that I certainly am very conscious of and very supportive of any of the health issues that might exist in the community. That has not been my, my focus about spending the money in terms of that because I think that the transfer station has some accountability and some responsibility, and I just want to make sure that they're doing that before any of these dollars are spent for any of that. So I'm going to ask again Director Farrar if we could have, based up on the host agreement, if I've got it correct, that we can make a request now whether, and we'll have to see what they respond to, in terms of maybe, I don't know, maybe quarterly monitoring of the air, soil, smell, I think the, and noise. I think that we have, the smell, and I know the perfume, I don't know if Madeline's here tonight or not, but she calls it perfume. They do have something that they put in there that has sort of gotten the garbage smell down. I didn't get complaints this year, so I don't know how that's working. But asking them to give us reports, and I'm basing this up on what's in the host agreement, could we do that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, Alderman Homes, grant for our corporation council. With respect to the host agreement, it's clear in Section 3 that inspection upon notice to the transfer station operator is a condition that can be exercised by the city, and it can seek to do a walkthrough of the facility for compliance with all applicable city codes, regulations, conditions of the IEPA permit. The host station agreement is quite clear that the, all conditions of the IEPA permit must be complied with during the host, during the transfer station's operations. So it may be advisable to reach out. I do recall at many points in the last year, as the host station agreement was being discussed, and that advanced was exchanging correspondence with city staff, that they did indicate that they were prepared to sit down and convene meetings with the city upon request for informational purposes, for briefings of city staff, for briefings of the residents, for briefings of the neighbors. So it'd be most appropriate that in conjunction and in compliance with the host agreement, to which they agreed to abide by, that those meetings be convened. It's certainly provided for under the agreement. In terms of the monitoring, I think once we figure out what the current situation is, that could, that could act as the parameters going forward. Also, the other thing to consider is with all the improvements that they've not yet undertaken, which they indicated they would undertake with respect to the entrance and reconfiguration in some of those, that that could be possibly a component of some of the monitoring that would have to go on. Certainly, there are issues attendant to construction noise with that, that they would have to comply with construction limitations, both state and local ordinance on that. So there is a way forward.
Okay. And then I guess the second thing I want to say about it is in terms of the infrastructure, and I know that I've been sort of tunnel vision on this, but when the fees were first assessed, that's what we talked about, was because they were tearing, those big trucks were tearing up the streets, and I have sort of stayed focused on that. I'd like to see all of the infrastructure issues be taken care of, not instead of the health, but I really do feel very strongly that they have some accountability to the community, and I think that that should come first. Now, if that doesn't happen, then, you know, we'll have to look at it. So I'm not being disrespectful of what the community is saying. I'm very much aware of it, been a part of it since it began, in terms of the movement of trying to get them, number one, out of the community, which is not going to happen, but certainly trying to put some accountability and some responsibility there. And I think that we have to use the host agreement to our benefit in terms of trying to get them to comply with some of this. So that's where I'm at with this, and I would make that request of the law department to look into that.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank you, Alderman Homes. I echo a lot of the thoughts you just shared, and I also received the same emails. And if I can just piggyback on what you shared, there were two other issues that, that were brought up, one being the issue of the rodents, and I'm sure you would have, would have mentioned that, that we've also received from rodents. And is there anyone here from the Health Department? And I'll just direct you on. Is it possible you included the aerial maps as part of the budget memos? Can we just do a heat map specifically for that area for rodent calls?
Sure. Over what period of time?
Maybe look at the last six months. I can't remember. Someone in our Human Services meeting shared with us how far rats will travel for their food sources, so maybe just look up two blocks radius and see what we get.
Well, we know all the way up to Brown because we did have rats crossing the street by the high school and the barber shop this summer, so we do know that.
Yeah.
So it goes up that far.
So two blocks and up for?
I don't know if that's.
Thank you.
Okay. Both east and west, probably north and south as well.
We'll do a circle.
Circle.
And the second thing is just, there are people. And the second thing is just, there are people that are a lot smarter than me when it comes to environmental, and I, it's something that's come up, and I'm looking at Eleanor and also out to the crowd, Alderman Revelle, the monitoring of air. And I just don't know of any agency or organization that does that. And I don't know if that's a $10 expense or a $10,000 expense, and who's qualified to monitor that. So I share that with a group. It's been a great suggestion, and I definitely think it's a wonderful idea, but I have no clue, no idea where to begin. So if you all, as the environmental group, can share that information and see what agencies or organizations that are reputable that are out there doing it, I think that would be a great place to start the conversation versus looking at it as a percentage of funds that are received. I also agree with Alderman Holmes, and I think a lot of those funds should go towards infrastructure, particularly to help offset the devalue that some of these homes exist with being in such close proximity. So that's my, you know, public challenge to see if we can get some information in the next couple of weeks to provide some direction.
I hate to suggest that the state of Illinois is capable of doing anything these days, but the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency should-
I, you're right.
Should be able to help.
Page 68, and you'll see that they do very little.
Yeah.
Very little, very little.
I know. Alderman Miller, did you want?
Well, it sounds as though the EPA is not currently doing any kind of data collection for us, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't if we asked them. But that's something for us to look into. What I'm, I need a little clarification about, as we approve this budget, we're not, I don't see in the budget specified allocations of that 1.2 million. Is that something that we're going to be fine-tuning in the months to come as we gather more information?
Alderman Revelle, members of the council, that's my understanding. So I think there's a desire to wrap this up soon, but it's not included in the budget.
Right. Thank you.
Alderman Miller.
Unless anyone has any other questions regarding the trash transfer station. I'd like to actually talk about legal costs. Mr. Farrar, appreciate your report that you gave in here. It's interesting looking at the comparison between our community and other communities. The study you had from the BGA was interesting, and that said we're relatively cheap. But if you actually think about what we have in-house and out-of-house that we farm out, we actually are one of the higher municipalities in terms of legal costs. So we're looking at potentially $1 million a year in outside council, and then $1 million in-house as well. So I'm just wondering, and it looks like we've gone, in the past three years, we've had almost a threefold increase in outside council costs. We were about $300,000 three years ago, up to about $1 million since last year. So I'm just wondering, what's your thoughts in regards to the increase of our outside council fees and the total cost of legal fees in general?
Sure. With respect to that, Alderman Miller, the main data point that's affecting the information that's been reported to you and has also been reported to you by other outlets is the James Park case. And there is a major environmental litigation that's currently pending in the federal court that's been pending for about, off and on, for about a year, year and a half. And given all of the testing and all of the extensive motion practice that Jenner and Block and Winston and Strawn have thrown at the city, we've had to retain some environmental experts in environmental law to assist us in representing the city's interests. One of the other points to keep in mind is under the federal statutes that if the city does prevail, those costs are recoverable under the federal statutes. So one of the reasons why the costs are being incurred is to better the case at every possible juncture and to counter every motion, every argument, every issue that is thrown at us by the 10 attorneys that are assisting NICOR and ComEd on their defense of the litigation. So it's certainly a very well-considered plan that has been discussed at many junctures, both in community meetings and certainly in meetings of this council, in terms of how to present the best possible case and make the strongest possible case such that the federal judge will agree with the city's allegations, and that if we do ultimately prevail, that those, all of those costs will be recovered.
And do you anticipate in 2017 similar costs to this year?
No, because essentially where we're at at this point on the amended complaint is, I think that the city has pled every conceivable cause of action it can in good faith and in accordance with the pleading parameters of both the federal statutes and the environmental statutes at play. So we're at a juncture right now where both utilities have moved to dismiss the amended complaint. Both parties, both sides have fully briefed out those matters, and it's now resting in chambers with the judge assigned to the case. So I'm quite candid, and I have been candid with this council in the past, that if the city, for whatever reason, does not prevail at the amended complaint stage, that it would be a very important decision to consider whether the city would want to go forward. If the city would go forward with a second amended complaint, some of those costs, some of the scale may be similar to what we've encountered in calendar year 2016. If the city, but let's look at the converse, if the city does prevail at the pleading stage, the matter does proceed and the judge does have it proceed, then the strategic assessment will have to be performed by the utilities. If they want to engage in discovery, have all of their CEOs, their department directors and everyone else brought in and deposed for seven hours at a time, which would be extremely costly for them. So it's typically what happens in these environmental cases is once you get past the pleading stage, one way or the other, the case either goes on or the parties would start beginning to discuss settlement. And if we do discuss settlement, then costs would be lower because proceedings would be in abeyance at that point.
So I assume these costs usually are put forth, I don't know if Marty can answer this too, in the insurance fund? Is that where they're usually allocated, our outside council costs?
Yes, Alderman Miller, normally these would be in the insurance fund.
My concern is we've had $1 million and a half almost right now that we haven't really seen. It's just kind of been spent. So I'd like to have some process going forward to make sure that we have oversight. I don't know if we have quarterly reports or something of that sort for what we're spending in outside council expenses, anything projected to come up in the future as well for where we'll be retaining outside council, et cetera. Because it's, right now, or over the past three years, we've had the doubling of our legal expenses, it looks like, over the last three years or so. So I'd like to have some more reporting and insight into how we're actually spending this money and how this is proceeding going forward.
Certainly. And it is, globally, it is reported out in the annual financial report, meaning that if you take a look at where the insurance fund has gone in the last, since 2009 or so, with an $8 million deficit in claims, down to under a $2 million deficit in claims, that bettering of the fund balance and actually having a cash balance in the insurance fund was done with these costs, not including 2016. Our audit only goes through 2015, but, so all of the previous costs, those would have been included in our audit at financials as expenses and in our fund balances. To your point, we will provide the, a sample report on outside council expenses.
And Alderman Miller, members of the council, we already provide the council a very extensive quarterly litigation report. We'll just add it to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
Nope, he addressed the question.
You're good?
I'm good.
All right. There are no other lights on.
So Madam Mayor, then, we would forego a meeting of the 21st and then just bring the budget back for adoption on the 28th unless there's additional questions.
Does that work for everyone?
I don't understand, Harry Clark.
Alderman Rainey, I have a question for you. Aren't you friends with the Illinois Environmental Protection Act? Who did you make friends? Your new best friend?
We're just like this.
Yeah. All right. So you could-
He's waiting for my call.
Well, call him and tell him we need air testing.
I'll do that, not tomorrow.
Tomorrow, there's other stuff going on. Alderman Holmes can wait for 24 hours.
This is a different question than I had for, but yes, I will, I will come.
Yeah, that would be terrific.
We'll call him from your office.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I have one other question.
Alderman Holmes.
Not on this, but, City Manager, Harry Clark, am I understanding, so you're going to come back to us on the 28th with additional costs? Is that-
I hope not.
Oh, okay.
But as we continue to work on the project, as the staff has continued to work on the scope of the project, I did not want to come on the 28th if we're unsuccessful in resolving these issues and have you've had six weeks of discussions on the budget and not know about it. So I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware that this is an issue. I feel confident this evening that we will be able to resolve this issue. We'll put it on the agenda regardless because I think it's important just to close this discussion. But I didn't want to go three weeks until the 28th and then not, and have an issue and not make you aware of it ahead of time. That's all.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Call of the wards. Alderman Miller.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Winn.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
Two things. Tomorrow night at Gibbs Morrison, 7:30, we will be having a watch party. If anyone wants to come and join us, it's being sponsored by the NAACP. And it's the first one we've had on the West Side, so please come and watch the returns with us. And then on next Thursday, the 17th, is the regular Fifth Ward meeting, and we will be having both superintendents, District 65 and District 202. So Dr. Gordon and Dr. Witherspoon will both be there. So everyone's invited. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem.
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Revelle.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And Alderman Rainey.
No report.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Go vote.